Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our special Sioux Falls City Council meeting. It's Friday, May 1st, 2:00 PM. We have some of our councilors joining us on the phone, and we will take a roll and see who's all with us. Councilmember Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Staley?
Here.
Recky?
Here.
Recky? Erickson?
Here.
Kylie?
Kylie, here.
Nitzer?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
All right. I'd ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's move on to item three. We need approval of this very short agenda. Someone want to make a motion on that?
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Nitzer.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Nitzer. Any discussion? We'll take a vote, please. Councilmember Sale?
Yep.
Starr? Staley?
Yes.
Recky? Erickson?
Yes.
Yeah.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson, yes. Kylie, yes. Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We'll move on then to that item, which is item four. Item four, first reading in ordinance adopting the Sioux Falls Board of Health Business Regulations pertaining to the novel coronavirus COVID-19. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Thursday, May 7th, 2020. Hello, Jill.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. Jill Franken, Public Health Director. It's good to be here this afternoon. We have a fair amount to get through, so I will go ahead and get started with that. As you know, we've been at it as an EOC for a number of days now. It's actually day 54 of our Emergency Operations Center to respond to COVID pandemic, and we have been hard at work in those 54 days. I just want to remind everybody of what our priorities were, objectives of the EOC when we first launched, and we're doing community mitigation. And it were these five priorities, and that was to limit and slow the spread and illness of COVID in our community, and to limit the number of deaths in our community to the degree we can through that decreasing the spread. Preserve continuity of community essential functions. The continuity of those community essential functions is really critical for us getting through this time period. We wanted to minimize social disruption. We wanted to minimize the economic impact. And then we also wanted to make sure that we were doing a really good job coordinating with the community around this time period. So, sorry, I'm getting my... I don't know, Tom. This clicker doesn't seem... I might need you to forward that for me. Please. All right, thank you so much. So, this slide is just to also remind you of how we've been going about really looking at data, how we have been making sure that we are continually reviewing that, as much possible data as we can, as we can collect. We've also been, when we look at that data, which has been really helpful for us in the EOC and with administration making decisions, as well as for all of you, we've been then using that data to really work with all our partners to make sure we're reassessing where we're at and where we need to be heading or making recommendations as a community, or what kind of efforts do we need to be putting in place to protect our community. And then, how do we realign as a result of what we've reassessed? And how are we continuing to realign? You've obviously been very involved in that realignment, with the various regulations, ordinance that you have been approving throughout this time period. So, that's something that we've been using regularly in our decision-making process. So, next slide. So, this just gives you a point of reference now on where we're at with per capita cases. Just to let you know, as of today, we have 51 new cases in Minnehaha County, six new cases in Lincoln County, for a total of 57. We've been pretty level at that, at that range of cases over the last week or so. And then, our total for Minnehaha and Lincoln County is 2,242 today. And then in the state, we're at 2,525 in South Dakota.
Jill, can you come up? I think you're getting a little hard to hear online, so just give you a hall pass to get a little closer.
Is that better?
There we go. Thank.
I'm not touching them, so sorry, Stacy. I think you can hear me now pretty well? Okay. Sure, sure. Okay, sounds good. I'll try and get a little bit closer.
Could you repeat those numbers, too, that you just?
Sure, sure. So, total cases in Minnehaha County, or number of cases today that were reported, is 51. A number of cases reported today in Lincoln County is six, for a total of 57 for Minnehaha and Lincoln County. That's, and brings us to date to Minnehaha and Lincoln County total of 2,242. And then, a total in the state of South Dakota of 2,525. So, you can see on this graph that where that's placing us in the MSA is ranking about number 12. We've been sitting at 11 for our ranking of per capita cases, which is today, 822.66 cases per capita. And we've been sitting at 11 for a long time. We finally moved down to number 12. That's, that's good. That's good news. You want to be lower in that, on that ranking. Unfortunately, our neighbors to the south, Sioux City, has actually moved into, very rapidly, into that number 11 spot that we held. And you've probably been seeing the news and information that's been coming across about what they're facing in the last few days, and we've been closely, closely monitoring that. You can also see, we've just put some reference in around Smithfield and where we'd be at as an MSA in our ranking without Smithfield cases. And then also, if you look at all Smithfield cases, that includes like family members, close contacts that have become positive, that are related to Smithfield, where, kind of where we would hover in terms of per capita in that regard. So then, if you go to the next slide, Tom, this is a slide I believe you've also seen before. The mayor did show this slide yesterday, and this is updated today. This gives us, you can see the, this is for a three-week time period, and it is showing now, not total cases. I'm going to orient you that blue, those blue bars are actually our active cases, because we're paying attention and looking at how many active cases we have in Minnehaha and Lincoln County. And then also, that gold, those gold bars are what our hospitalizations are for those days. And then that line, the yellow line, gives you what is our rate of hospitalizations based on our active cases. And you can see that we're sitting at 8.1% for a hospitalization rate in our community. That's been pretty steady. If it increases right now, since our hospitalization rate has been pretty level, it would be increasing only because our active cases is decreasing at this time. You can see that slow decrease. So, next slide, please. So, this is the slide that, one of many, that was shared with you two weeks ago Friday. When Eileen presented to you our modeling data, this was one of the slides that we used to help us to give you a visual of where we think we'll be when the surge is here in our community and about what time period it is. And I'll just kind of go over this with you, so I can reorient you to this. First off, the sort of gray bar across the top, between 600 and 700, is the health systems, both of VA and Stanford's capacity to be able to handle our surge, okay? And then that line that takes you, starting a little around May 23rd, and the line that is that high surge that takes you a little above 700, was what we thought two weeks ago is where our surge would lead us in hospitalization. So that's at the highest point of our surge. We would be a little over 700 people in our hospitals from Minnehaha and Lincoln County on one given day, okay, just to kind of orient you. So, what we said was, well, let's look at now where we're heading beyond just that point in time of two weeks ago. So, our folks have been taking that hospitalization rate by day, or the total hospitalizations by day, and that's those gold bars that you see. And so that's every day, that's the number of hospitalizations we have. And we then are every week going to be remodeling or re-projecting out where we think we're going to be. Now, the really good news is that new blue line that takes us a little bit farther out, but then brings us down to about, around just under 500, is a new projection that we have of modeling for where we think we'll be at the peak of our surge if we continue with our current mitigation effort. So I want you to well understand that. That's based on 25% mitigation that we currently have in place. When we met with our health systems this week and we talked through what this means, we can see obviously that there is, we think now we can predict a lot of capacity to handle the demand. And so when you look at those, when you look at the objective that we set about minimizing economic impact and social disruption, that's where we have to keep that in mind, along with protecting the community. And we think there's some room for us to be able to manage within the new blue line and the original two-week-old projection that we had. Does that make sense? Okay. So, next slide, please. So, we then are looking at proposing new ordinance that would be before you for first reading today. And I just wanted to kind of share that, in addition to the assessment I just showed you and the things that we've been looking at, we also have other things that we've been assessing to make sure that we, as a community, it's not just about data, but it's also about our response and our ability to be able to respond to those cases and the impact in our community that we will see. So some of the things that we've been looking at, in addition to data, is where we're at with our supply chain and how effectively we can get the kinds of equipment, supplies, and materials into our community to be able to meet the needs of our community. We've been able to really fully assess and know that our EMS system and our first responders, their protocols are set, they are, their protections are in place. We've got a continuity of operations group that's well-managing what we need to be doing to make sure we can maintain our essential business functions as a city. And then, we've also been looking at and making sure we're ready for any additional community mitigation that we need to, some of the things we've been doing, like the SOAR program for businesses that we've... I'm really sorry, I'm a hands person when I'm talking, and I keep touching these, so I'll wash, I'll clean them off when I'm done. So the SOAR program, as well as things like how we've been preparing for the impacts to our vulnerable populations by having like an isolation center up and ready. We've already been housing people that can't quarantine and isolate effectively where they are dwelling right now, and so we've been having to manage that, and we'll continue to manage that at a greater level. And then, really, looking at the region, I alluded to that earlier, that we've been really paying attention with our health system partners to understand what's happening around us, because they are regional facilities, and so there could be some, you know, and will be some impacts to them based on cases and hospitalization needs from other communities in their service area. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. You know, I just got to say, as we started preparing then for what we'd be recommending to you today, it's clear that everyone in our community has been taking this very seriously. I mean, that is, there's no doubt about that. And that is really good news for us. And in addition, we're just really thankful for, you know, not just our community, but our health system partners, our EOC partners, man, our Board of Health, they just got done with a meeting again today, right before this meeting, to approve regulation that could align with this ordinance. And of course, our business community, and just in general, the residents of our community, like I mentioned. So, this is just really going to have to continue to be a steadfast approach. We are not at the finish line right now, because as you could see, we haven't hit our surge. We haven't even, we haven't even really started surging yet, based on our predictions and the best modeling that we can, that we can do based on what we've seen in other communities. And so, this fight still is on, but we think there's some things that we can do right now. So, let me go next slide, please. So today, we've made a recommendation. As I mentioned, this recommendation was in a regulation that was approved by the Board of Health at their one, that their meeting earlier. And it's really going to allow us to scale up slightly our businesses in a safe manner and allow them to be able to operate more fully than they've been able to thus far. So the first section I'll go through of this new regulation is really putting some definitions in place that can help everybody be working off of the same set of definitions. So, first off, I'm not going to go through premises, this is pretty self-explanatory, but party or parties is something I want to just quickly mention, and that is that we identified party or parties as groups of six or fewer adult patrons, but that minors are allowed in this party and not included in that six limit. So we really sat down and thought about, you know, what should a party of people look like that should be allowed to, you know, come to a restaurant or to an entertainment venue? What's reasonable? And what can give us some level of assurance that there's an ability to social distance around that party? And so, we came up with six, that we felt was a good reasonable number, and that could be manageable for businesses to still have people come to their place of business and want to do business with them, whether a restaurant or whatnot. Also, the next old patron is pretty well-defined, but seating is another one that we spent some time thinking about, and that is, it might sound pretty simple to say seating, but we talked about seating at tables. We defined it as tables, counters, and bars. So, we wanted to make sure that what we, what we set out in this next, the next sections of ordinance can really help us understand that that means bar area, it means counters at a cafe, and it also obviously means tables. Okay. So we can go to the next slide. Thank you. So this is, this is what we would be including for food service. That's in section two. And I'm just going to read this for everyone that's viewing this. So all licensed food service entities, including but not limited to restaurants, food courts, coffee houses, bars, breweries, distilleries, wineries, clubs, cafes, or other similar places of public accommodation offering food and beverages for onsite consumption, including any alcohol licenses with on-sale privileges, shall be permitted to allow patrons into their businesses so long as the maximum number of patrons allowed upon the business's premises at any given time shall not exceed the greater of the following. And that is, the first one is that it shall not exceed the greater of 10 patrons or the number of patrons for which the business can provide seating to all parties, which is no less than six feet apart from other parties. Okay? So, what that means, right there, I'm just going to stop and explain that. So that means that if I have a very small restaurant, for example, and I can't place my tables, et cetera, to be able to accommodate up to 10 people, I can have 10 people. I just can't have any more than that if I can't successfully distance the parties six feet apart from each other. And we have some of those entities around town that would fit that, you know, criteria. If they can, they're a larger restaurant, and they can have more than 10 people, because they have lots of tables and they can space out their tables, you know, eliminate some of them so they can have plenty of seated distance of no more, you know, that has to be a minimum of six feet. If they can do that successfully, they can have more patrons in their establishment. However, they have to be able to do that. They have to be able to have six feet of distance between each party. And so, again, businesses included in this section may not serve any single group of patrons larger than a party as defined therein. So if they're going to serve a group of people, it has to be no more than that party definition. So, a group of people sitting at a table cannot be more than six adults, and then including children, if there's children along with them. Okay? One of the things that we thought about was, what's the difference between when people come to a place and they make a choice to engage in company with people? It's really them defining that risk for themselves. Does that make sense? It's, it's them saying that they, they have taken into consideration when they've decided to meet people for supper, that they've, they know them, and they have understood, they haven't been, they've been social distancing, they feel very confident that they've been doing, you know, what they need to, and they've all agreed, we're going to go have a bite to eat together. But what they aren't able to control are the strangers around them. And so having that six-foot minimum of distance between them allows them to make the choices that they're making, but helps protect everyone, including the people around them and themselves, if there's any risk of transmission in that, in that restaurant or that particular locale. Does that make, I'm just, a couple of head nods would help me to know that I'm, okay, thank you, thank you. So I just wanted you to understand that, because that's something that is confusing, and it does mean that it's seated. And so chairs have to be at least six feet apart from each other, not just the table six feet apart, but the chairs. So people sitting in the chairs have to be able to be at least six feet apart from each other, okay? So you can't just have tables be six feet apart. If I'm sitting in a chair at a table and the person behind me is sitting in a chair at a table, those two chairs have to be at least six feet apart from each other, because it's social distancing of people. Does that, okay, okay. So, let's go to the next slide. So, then the next one is for fitness and entertainment, and this took some, some work for us to be able to talk through this one as well. But it does say that, and we decided to bring forward, that all recreational facilities, athletic facilities, health clubs, and entertainment venues shall be permitted to allow patrons into their business so long as the maximum number of patrons is allowed upon the business's premises at any given time shall not exceed the greater of the following. And that's, again, you see that 10-patron rule for a smaller entity or 50% of the business's occupant load as determined by the city fire marshal or planning and development office. I will tell you, we've already had folks calling in to those entities. I've seen what their occupancy level is, so they can be in preparation of hopefully complying with this if this were adopted. So, let's just talk through that a little bit, because, you know, I had to think about that from a public health perspective. If I, how do you quantify what percent can allow for social distancing? And I'm going to give you an example. If you go to, 50% might not seem appropriate. If you just think of in a movie theater, for example, I don't mean to pick on them, but it's a good example. So you have seated venues. Okay, so you have every other person in a, in a seat, right? Well, that wouldn't get you six feet. But how many times do individuals go, you know, to any venue? It's likely going to be in couples, or maybe three, or four. And so... You're able to then, because people are sitting together, one, two, three, four, to have capacity then to be allow for two seats between. Okay? I think that was the best rationale and way I could help come up with something that I could feel made sense from my mind and from the perspective I was bringing to crafting this ordinance. I think the important thing to remember in this one, as well as the other, is this is a maximum. You know, this isn't saying that if you can't meet that goal of being able to meet the social distancing requirements that you need to comply with, that you're social distancing people in your establishment, maybe 50% is not what you're going to be able to accomplish. Maybe you're going to have to decide it has to be 40%, for example. That's something in this particular section, businesses are going to have to take into consideration, and this would be a perfect example where someone from our health department could come out and help them with their floor seating, et cetera, to be able to accomplish that through our SOAR program. So next slide. So this is, you know, the last section that really does apply from a regulation perspective. In addition to, you know, guidance regarding cleaning, disinfecting, hygiene practices, et cetera, there's guidance rolling out every day on this, and there's actually new guidance out there right now for various entities that this ordinance applies to. It's really, you know, obviously, and I've mentioned it several times now, critical that people are distancing between parties and maintaining, you know, that social distancing in the various venues. So it says here that all businesses, including those not listed in sections two and three, are expected to maintain social distancing between parties and should implement or continue to implement procedures to ensure compliance with federal and state health guidance in order to prevent the spread of COVID, including those things like our SOAR, our resiliency program, which we would highly recommend folks are engaged with as we are going through this time period. There's places, you know, the CDC, I mentioned, has their guidance. The State Health Department has a whole section around guidance that references CDC guidance, and then people can go to siouffalls.org/COVID19 to get information from our SOAR program and other resources as well. So next slide, please, Tom. Okay. So then, we did put an enforcement mechanism in here as well. It would be a class-two misdemeanor if you were found in violation of this ordinance, very similar to what was in the last ordinance. However, I will tell you that we have done quite a bit of interface with lots of businesses, even with the current ordinance that's in place, and we have not found violations, and we have not had to take action on any businesses thus far. So, similar to prior, we would expect that we will do education, make sure people are aware of this, these new regulations, these new ordinances, and how, and help explain how they apply to their business, provide that technical assistance, do some proactive, you know, inspections, and get out there and make sure people are complying, and then also utilize our complaint-driven system to be able to also go out and inspect and make sure folks are in compliance. So that's another piece. But I, you know, given what we've seen thus far, I'm really very confident in what we will see in our business community and how I think they will take appropriate action. I, I don't think any business wants to be responsible for seeing COVID spread in our community, and I think everyone's going to take the kind of action that needs to be taken to ensure they're doing their part to help. But it's also going to take the part of people that go to those places, right? We all have to have a part to play in that, because if you're sick, you should still stay home. You should be using good handwashing principles. You should be making sure that you are doing your part to prevent the spread of COVID as well. So we, this isn't opening up anything related to, you know, we still want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to prevent the spread of COVID in our community, because if we start seeing surging beyond what we've anticipated, and it goes above that bar that our health systems can handle, we may need to, you know, come back and, and, you know, rethink what we're doing as a community and what kind of action we need to take. But for the foreseeable future, this is regulation we can feel really good about, we believe. You can see it doesn't have an end date, because we believe that businesses need to know that this is something that they can count on for a while, as long as it's working well, and can make some business decisions based on what's adopted by the council when it is. You know, one of the things, I've talked about this a lot. This is, this is going to become a new normal for us for a while, until we have a vaccine in place and we can gain that herd immunity that we need as a community, similar to what we've been able to do with our influenza seasons and what we were able to accomplish with H1N1 about 10 years ago. This is going to be a norm for us for the foreseeable future, is continuing to, you know, review that data, continue to reassess, and continue to realign as we need to, to make sure that we're doing what we can for the betterment of our community. So I, I want to really just, you know, thank some folks. If you want to go to the last slide, you know, these are some partners that have been pretty instrumental in our community, whether it be through our one Sioux Falls Fund, or with obviously Dr. Mike Wildy and Dr. Mike Elliott are here. You know, our Minnehaha County partners, our South Dakota Department of Health, the VA, et cetera, are instrumental in working with us, along with all of our EOC partners, in making sure that we're doing what we can for our community. And with that, I'll back over to you, Chair.
All right, thanks, Jill. All right, before we move on to the discussion of the council, we'll ask if there's public input on this topic. And if there is, just please come forward. Approach the mic as close as you can get. Try not to touch it, and go from there. Come forward, sir.
Good afternoon.
Come, come, come a little closer if you can, sir. Come as close as you can, right there.
Good afternoon. My name's Charlie Kinnick. I think all of you got an email from me, kind of trying to be part of the solution and not part of the problem. And, and I hope, and I think there's been, seems that there's been some consent and some consideration of this, and I'm happy to say that I, I think the, the solution that's being proposed here today is very good. It's just like we said, it's not the catch-all, the wind-all. I mean, I figured that one of my restaurants will be at about just over 50% with the six-foot distancing. I mean, just to give you an example, Cherry Creek's on the west, or the east side of town, and with the road closure, we went down 17%, and we were, we were not in, in the positive profit. So it's very, I mean, this is, we're stopping the bleeding, we're helping, and I, I really appreciate it. This is a tough time, tough time with this COVID, and we all have to kick in. And actually, this is one of my first times out after being self-quarantined for... this is one of my first times out after being self-quarantined for five weeks, going a little crazy. Um, so, I think one, one, I want to thank you. Um, I'm assuming it's, hopefully this will be approved, and, and then that will get us back in business. Um, we're not, I, I don't know that we're going to react how quickly after it's opened up, because we have our employees to think about, our customers to think about, our shortages of some of the sanitation things we're trying to get a hold of, so if the city has any access to, what we're looking for is self-dispensing sanitation. I've got 20 on order, can't find any. I've got, uh, closest thing I can come is, I can get a thousand quart bottles out of Florida that are sanitation stuff that we can put pumps on. But it, it is really going to be a, a, a tough road, so if there's any, any access there, I'd really appreciate it. Um, the one question that I had that was in there, and I, and I don't expect it to be part of this thing, but I just want to, the way we operate in, in fine dining restaurants and, and restaurants like I've got, we have booths, and I think I explained it in there, where we have booths that are about 12 inches above your head, so it kind of creates an envelope. So somehow we've got to just work on the dirty details of those. Right now, I'm going every other booth because booths are exactly six feet apart, in, in a standard booth configuration. I, I'm assuming right now that, that we'll not use those booths in between unless somebody approves that. So, I, I don't know what the, what the deal in the detail is though with the health department with everybody else. Because you do have some things where, but we have walls up, and maybe we need to do more than get it just up over here, maybe we need to take it all the way to the ceiling to get those, to get a few more booths, because otherwise every other booth will be empty. So, um, I don't know if anybody has any questions. I actually, I mean, I, you know, our National Restaurant Association, here's our reopening guidance. I mean, they have put it out, we've got, I've probably been on 15 seminars, uh, webinars and everything else, and we are concerned about the safety of the employees and the customers, because if we don't do a good impression when they walk in, they're not, they're not going to be comfortable the next time they walk in, and they probably won't. So, I don't know if anybody's got any questions of the information that I provided.
We'll let, we'll let anyone else speak, Charlie, and then if they do, they'll call you back up. Thanks for reaching out to us, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll say one other thing to your question about, um, just, uh, we have the SOAR team that we set up, and they can come help you configure and, and give you best practices and help you make sure you're in compliance, so, uh, we'll, we'll reach out to you if you need that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Your Honor. Um, my name is Robert Mabey. I have, uh, sent each one of you an email and a, um, article that may or may not be published in the Argus Leader. Um, I just wanted to help you, uh, put this in context, and, uh, you might say, and some in my family would tell me, I probably should have stayed home, but, uh, I'm a lawyer and a pharmacist with an MBA. So I kind of look at this from the economic angle and the medical angle and the legal angle. And one of the things we need to do in putting this in context is we have several big hospitals here in town. What are the daily or monthly rates of death in those hospitals? What about the nursing homes? We have a large number of nursing homes in this town. What is the daily or monthly data or rate of death? In New York City, 109 people die every day. So when you see them report this data about how many people are dying, you have to understand the baseline is quite a few. As you pointed out, Sioux Falls services a trade area medically of about 2 million people. And the main causes of death in South Dakota are still, um, coronary artery disease and cancer. We have, in Minnehaha County and in the state of South Dakota, we have over 400 people who are currently suffering from active cases of hepatitis C and HIV. So putting this in context, you need to look at the whole infectious disease picture within the county. And, and quite frankly, the 20 people, although it's very, very sad, but when you look at it, 1% of South Dakota's population, 1%, would be about 8,000 or 9,000. 8,000 or 9,000. 20 is a very small fraction. For those families, I don't dispute the fact, as I pointed out in my letter to you, it's serious. But we need to look at this statistically, and is this a good reason to shut down the town? That decision, of course, is yours. But then I also have talked to some people in the livestock business, and for those of you who are not familiar with the livestock business, we have had a coronavirus vaccine for pigs and cows and dogs for over 30 years. So if you go to your veterinarian, he can vaccinate your dog. They also vaccinate cows and pigs, because coronavirus up until this year was always referred to as the common cold. This year, there's something different about it. I'll, I'll grant you that. There's been a reaction. But should we meter our reaction based on the fact that this community in South Dakota, because of all the healthcare facilities we have, because of all the healthcare facilities we have, and because of the nursing homes we have, is going to have a higher per capita rate? We will always have a higher per capita rate. What is the baseline data? What is the baseline data on the number of people in nursing homes who die every day in Sioux Falls? What is the baseline data on people who die at the VA every day in Sioux Falls? What about the same for Sanford and Avira? I think that data is something that you should consider so that your response is proportionate. Does that make sense? Okay. I sent a letter and a copy of my proposed, uh, um, letter to the editor, to the Argus Leader, which I've submitted. I don't know if they've made a decision to publish it yet or not. Sometimes I take a great deal of satisfaction when they don't publish one of my letters, because I know they've come to the conclusion that I'm not too liberal. Um, that gives me some peace of mind. Uh, so I would offer into the record, if one of you wants to do that, my letter and my letter to the editor. I, I fairly succinctly put that together. I took a little time to do it, Your Honor, and, and I want to commend all of you for spending all of this time. Uh, I, I think it's wonderful that you're spending this time, um, but I also want to make sure that the decision is rational from an economic and a medical and a political standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Tim Cant, uh, owner of Stogie Cigar Lounge, Bin 201, and others. The only question I've really got, I've read it over and over and over and over, is where, and Jill might have to answer this, is the number of patrons for which a business can provide seating to all parties. And the reason that I say that is with our business down there, our outdoor seating is probably three times what our indoor seating is. Does this mean that somebody that's walking down from Phillips Avenue and they come down to our business and they're walking through the parking lot, that they got to quickly find a seat and sit down? I mean, can nobody be standing at all? Um, which a lot of people do around bars and stuff like that, or they might walk over to another table and talk to somebody or whatever? Are they going to have to stay six feet away from that table if they're not sitting? That's, that's the only thing. Otherwise, I think you guys did a great job. You know, you guys have put in a lot of effort. I've talked to several of you. I think it meets my criteria good. I mean, it's, it's going to make our business from, you know, 10 people to 75 to 100, so it's going to be a big thing. But the definition of that is that everybody has to be seated at your bar no matter what. And if somebody gets up, you know, can they not go to the bar and get a drink? Or are they all going to have to be waited on all the time? You know, vice versa. So I think that's just something that is a gray area that I think can be answered, but especially when you're outside, you know, a lot of people are, are standing around, you know, and do they have to stand six feet apart? Or does everybody have to be seated? So, that would be my only question that would
Tim, send, if you, send an email to mayor@siouffalls.org, and then our SOAR team will get in touch with you on that. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mayor, Mayor and City Council members, I am Deborah Owen, Director of Public Policy from the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce. We represent nearly 2,000 members who employ about 80,000 employees. However, about 60% of our members employ 10 employees or less. To begin, Mayor, we want to thank you for your leadership in guiding our community through these difficult times. Your responsiveness and daily communication has provided crucial information to help our city follow those CDC guidelines while providing assurance that your team is fully engaged in keeping our community safe.
Thank you.
The chamber rises in support of this ordinance. We believe it is the right time to ease restrictions in specific sectors of the business community. This ordinance strikes a balance between helping businesses keep operating and keeping their employees and their patrons safe, as the easing of the restrictions are well within the CDC's best practices and standards. We urge your support of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
See, I'm Bruce at Sioux Falls. So this is a start, and like I said, it made the paper about the homicides, because we had a 16-year-old that committed suicide last week. And we need to have Chief Burns bring up those numbers to the, um, to the city here. So if we don't come up to 100% by June or July, we're going to see possible law enforcement suicides, hopefully not. Um, I, and people's looking at me like I'm crazy, but I have contacted the police department, and some of them's stress level is up here because of calls for service. They're getting stressed out. And believe me, if we have police committing suicide here, because it happens nationwide, and if it happens here, we're going to be in a crisis. I reached out to the police department, Mayor. The police department told me to come today to speak on the stress level that they're going through with this. We need to write it up to 100% in June or July, to 100%. Our department is stressed. Their stress level is high. The police department, and I'm going to say it again, do not even want to shelter in place because of the mistakes arising. People committing suicide is rising, hanging themselves in the closets, putting a gunshot wound to their head, business owners, because they don't know how they're going to survive. Nine in one week of suicides. Yes, of course, people have mental illnesses. Of course, absolutely, people's under stress, but this did not help it. The city did shut down businesses in a legal sense, because they put 10 patrons under. They did it in a legal way, not an illegal way. So yes, businesses were shut down. Now, I'm not going to get into who died here, but you got your rich people, you got your middle class, and you got your poor that committed suicide. The 16-year-old that took his life, you know, I come from a broken-up home, because he couldn't socialize, because he had a socializing, he couldn't go to park, he couldn't go here, he couldn't go there, and it played a big role on him. So on behalf of the family, I was here to speak on that. I think that the numbers of the data is inflated. You're going to need to look at the real true data here. Um, this is not New York City. We're not dropping dead, dead bodies like this, here. I think in June or July, we should pick it up to 100%.
Do you have comments on the ordinance we're, we're talking about? Okay. All right. Anyone else here to speak today on this? Come forward, young man.
Hi, Greg Nelson. I left the top 10 list at home because that was a total flop. Uh, quickly though, just wanted to comment on Jill's numbers, and I think you guys have made great progress. I'm excited about the ordinance and seeing what happens to the cities. Um, I decided to focus back on data and just quickly with the ordinance, as we open things up and you see the curve likely start to rise, I believe that future curve, even the blue one that she showed, on the future is already flatlined. And so if you understand data, and we already have at least 14 days of a 25% minimization, um, if we ran that course through all of May, I think that curve would never have been reached under current mitigation. And I think, I think we all know that. And so as you look at that curve, I think it is going to rise, and you guys are going to have some tough decisions coming ahead, and so I'm excited about the changes that you made for businesses. I'm excited to see them start up, and I, I hope that we all have the wisdom, as that curve probably does rise true, we realize that's the opening up curve, and, and we adapt based on that. So that's all I have. The ordinance looks, uh, it looks like it lets people operate. Many good thoughts in there, and I like that we sped it up versus waiting till, uh, May 15th. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else here to speak today on this? All right. Let's, uh, move into any discussion. Counselors, do you have any questions for Jill? Counselor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you for the presentation, Jill. Couple of quick questions. So, just so I have this clear, when we talk about 10 patrons, or we talk about six people at a table, or we talk about 50% in a business, and we say minors don't count towards that count, that's on all those counts, and then does minors still, as I understand it, under Or is it a different definition of that?
Uh, the minors would count toward the seated item, and so 50% is 50% of people. Yep. And then the other would be at a seated table or a seated, um, party. Um, that would be six people, no more than six people, adults, and then minors would not be counted in that six. We, a lot of discussion about some families, there are more than six, and so how do you equate for, if there's children, uh, that are part of a family? And so we decided that minors would not be included in that maximum.
And minors are under what age? Just 18? Okay. Just double checking on that. Um, Mr. Cant had a good question there, as far as when we're talking about people being seated and, again, with capacity, have we looked at kind of his scenarios with that? How that?
Yep. Uh, we did talk with Jeff Eckhoff and Luanne Ford, um, and really talked about how do these outdoor venues, how do they manage this? And there is actually an occupancy, uh, load that you could consider, like for an entertainment venue, for example, restaurant would be different. Yes, you would have to have your tables and have it seated if you're a restaurant. If you're an entertainment venue that's hosting something, um, and it happens to be outside, you know, that's, um, that would be that 50% based on the occupancy load, and they can calculate that out if it's not already calculated for, uh, various entities that want to host something like in the parking lot, for example. Does that answer that question? But as far as, you know, people, parties have to stay within six feet, a minimum of six feet apart right now. And so this is the new, this is going to be a new norm for us for a while, but I would say we did not, it's not written in here that people can just be wandering all over in a restaurant or a bar. You have to be using social distancing right now. And so it isn't going to be a matter of people can just get up at will, they have to use the bathroom, of course, you know, things of that nature, but you have to still be maintaining that social distancing. So those norms that we've set in place right now still have to apply as far as people staying six feet apart from each other, no matter where they're at in a setting. So if I'm walking to the bathroom and someone's walking out of the bathroom, I want to respectfully stay six feet away from that person if I'm at a restaurant. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does make sense. I think that's important, too, if this goes through to, that we are, and I think we're all doing a good job of emphasizing that to folks, that it's important people stay diligent on this if we go this, this step, because it, we aren't spiking the football here and, boy, things are clear and here we go. And if we don't do that, we'll be back here. I think you touched on that in your presentation, talking about scaling things back. We don't want to be there either. My, one last question is, to this point, and I don't know if this is for you or, um, have we had a lot of calls, like with people that are complying or we're doing 10 people in a business to this point? Have we had a lot of calls, complaints, people coming up where, hey, I'm in such and such a business and I've seen 30 people in here? And then if we have, what do we do? Or has there been a lot of that so far?
So, we have had calls where people are concerned because they may see a lot of cars in a parking lot, and they don't want to go in because they're concerned, you know, they're not going to walk into that establishment and start doing a head count, but if they see a lot of cars in the parking lot, they may be, you know, quite inclined to call our department and ask us to go out and do an inspection. And when we have, we've done a number of those. Um, the list is quite long of calls that we have gotten, and we've gone out, but we have always found them to be in compliance. So it might be a combination of, you know, their staff, uh, that have parked there, or maybe if it's a, a bar, restaurant that's operating, that maybe someone has taken an Uber or Lyft home or whatever, or had a friend give them a ride home and left their car there. But we've gone in and done inspections, we've found everyone to be in compliance.
Okay. That's good news. Thank you.
And if I might, um, I just want to let you know that Dr. Elliott and Dr. Willdie are happy, uh, to answer any questions, and then also, Albert Schmidt, if you, if there's any other data you want to pull up and look at, he's downstairs and he's able to pull up some data if you need that as well, so.
Thanks, Jill. Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. Um, first of all, I want to say thank you to everyone that has reached out. We have heard from so many different businesses and community, um, people We have heard from so many different businesses and community, um, people around the way, and, and really, it's quite impressive, some of the innovation that we're seeing. And even, um, with talking with a few restaurant and bar owners, some of the extra above and beyond precautions that they're taking. I talked to a restaurant owner yesterday, it's a restaurant bar, and his establishment is no longer doing glass, glasses. They're doing all toss cups, which, you know, stinks for the environment, but it's the healthy, safe thing to do right now. They also installed foot openers on the bathroom, so you don't have to keep opening the door with your hand, you can open them with your foot. They have hand sanitizer everywhere. Um, they have done paper menus with a limited menu, so those menus will be tossed immediately because everyone's touching the menu. So it's, it's quite impressive what, um, people are doing above and beyond. There's another, uh, a hair salon place that you have to call before you go in to make sure they don't have too many people inside. Um, just all those precautions that they are doing, um, is really, you know, makes me proud to be from Sioux Falls and from South Dakota. So I would just want to say thank you to everyone that's reached out to kind of help craft and really pay, play a huge part in making sure that we're flattening that curve and, and not seeing huge spikes. I do have a question, Jill, for you, and I don't mean to, I don't, I don't want to go down a bunny trail here. In section three, uh, it talks about recreational facilities, athletic facilities, health clubs, entertainment venues. My question that has come up to me, um, I, I took a handful of calls yesterday, is about, um, people practicing outside. So, for example, you can go to, say, said athle, I don't want to use names, but said athletic venue, and I can do batting cages, I can kick footballs, I can practice soccer, I can do all those things for rent, we're not restricting that, um, but we can't do it outside. And so the question has been, you know, if we control those, and if I'm playing catch, I mean, we go and play catch with our kids and whatever, but if I get together 10 or 12 neighbor kids and we're playing catch, it's okay, but it's not okay if I have my, say, Little League or SEBA hat on. Um, is there a way that, they just want to make sure that they are operating safely and within the rules? And so I'm just looking for a little bit of guidelines with that, because we're allowing them to do it inside said athletic facility. But if, and if it takes some time for you to get back to me, I'm totally fine with that, too, because this doesn't go in place right now. I just think that some of those folks are looking for some guidelines as far as, can we go out by, uh, the, the football fields, and can we scrimmage? Can we, I don't, I don't know what to say. And so I'm asking, if you want to take a look at that and get back to us, um, I, like I said, I fielded five or six calls yesterday about that. So that's where I would question.
Councillor, those are really good questions. We have been talking about that, because those are more on the administration side of how we will manage through with our parks and our, our, you know, league, you know, issues and facilities that we have through our parks and rec system.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, maybe next week, we can formulate, you know, some better information to share with you, because we are, we are actively talking about that.
Right.
I'm just, I'm just going to break, break rank a little bit of Robert's rules, because I do want to speak to that, I'm not going to pass the gavel, but we actually just had a call at noon with all the mayors and the MSAs, Len X T, they're all dealing with the same thing.
Yep.
Um, the law right now on the books is no ordi, organized activities. We're meeting with those groups next week, the SEBAs, the Dakota Alliances, to understand what things they can do to ensure that they can hold those events safely for their kids and for their parents. So we don't have an answer yet.
Okay.
But we're having the discussions with those leagues, so that's being worked on.
Good. I appreciate that. And truly, um, when they had reached out originally, it was, they need to, they need to practice for four weeks, you know, or, or whatever it may be. And so they're not even asking about tournaments right now, but they're asking more, where you have fans and people congregating, they're asking more along the lines of, can we get out and practice? And so that's, thank you, I'm glad you're looking at it.
Yeah.
And appreciate the information, and, um, we'll provide feedback if I hear from others. So thank you again. Um, I think that this is a good start, and it's so important that we continue to still practice good social distancing. This, this isn't a free-for-all. This is not just everybody go out and have a party. This, this is still, we need to take the steps. And I think one of the things that was said, Mayor, you said it in your press conference the other day, um, and I've heard it repeated over and over, is the whole intent, the entire time, was to make sure that when you need a hospital bed, it's available. We, we never said, you're not going to get it. We could never guarantee that. All the intent was to make sure that when you are ill, you have that hospital bed and you get the best care possible. And by not having the system overrun and not having the, the equipment available, that's where the issues fall. So this loosening up, I think, is a good step, and, and if you're not comfortable, stay home.
Councillor Steely, you want to go next?
Thank you. Um, first of all, I want the public to understand that, uh, yesterday, the mayor's office contacted me, and I, I think trying to contact all the council members to talk, to help us to understand what was coming. And I so appreciate that, Mayor Ten Haggen, uh, to be involved in the conversation on the front end of this. Um, so we got, we're able to give some input into this. And one of the things I said yesterday morning when we were on a conference call, is that from what I've heard from constituents, uh, there is, there's still a concern that this is opening up too fast. And we're all hearing from all different, from the whole community, and, and there's just across the board, different ideas about how this should play out. So I did say yesterday that I thought perhaps we should look at having, um, a lim, a time limit on this and reconsider it in a few weeks. Uh, I understand that the, the city's position, the mayor's position, is that they don't want to have that hanging over the business community's head as they move forward. But I, I did say yesterday, I want to say now, that I think we need to keep our finger on the trigger, because if this thing starts to take a turn for the worst, then we are going to immediately have to reposition ourselves. And I want the public, those people who are adamantly, adamantly opposed to this, to understand that we are watching this very closely. And I, I so appreciate getting these numbers of the hospitalizations and the infections daily. So I hate to, I, I did make a request that the, uh, heads of the hospitals would be here, Dr. Willoughby and Dr. Elliott, and I'm going to put you guys on the spot, and I'm going to ask you to come up, please, because you've been here before, and we've asked for your opinions in the past as to how you feel about this. I know that the public, especially those who are very leery about us moving forward with this, are going to feel better if they hear from, from you, that you think this is an, an appropriate measure to take. Thank you.
Right. So, uh, from a Sanford standpoint, we have, um, you know, I think a couple of weeks ago, stood here really, uh, in favor of the SOAR program and not, uh, in favor of a shelter in place, based on the modeling at that time, and the modeling has changed once again. And, uh, I think the mayor pointed out some time ago, I think very appropriately, that this only, not only changes by the day, but by the hour and continues to do so. Um, I think what we're seeing, what I personally have, uh, wrestled with over this past week, is when you put off, uh, medical care, as we are now up to about two months, you start to see ramifications of that. And I think it is time to, not only from a business perspective, but have people get, maybe a little more comfortable getting out with good social distancing, continued, uh, good hygiene practices, but, um, I'm a, I'm a little leery of the care that's being deferred at this time, and, and sincere thanks to everyone for taking care of yourselves, sincere. But there's some people that need help, and there's ramifications of that. And if nothing else, I think this ordinance, you know, while I sincerely support the business community and think it's the right thing to do from that standpoint, because there's a, a lot of suffering in that community as well, but I'm, I'm hoping it gives people comfort to be able to seek healthcare once again, because I think there's some needs that are not being addressed as well. And, uh, the models have, um, the models are the models, but I think they've held decently well, based on the information we have, to give us comfort to know that, as Councillor Erickson points out, that there will be beds available for those in need.
Thanks for your question, Councillor Staley. Um, uh, thanks to everybody in, in Sioux Falls and our surrounding communities. You know, the sacrifices that you've made personally, professionally, uh, are not lost on anyone. Humbled, really, uh, to think about the amazing efforts that, uh, the people in Sioux Falls and the surrounding areas have put forth. Quite proud to be, uh, citizen of Sioux Falls and, uh, great state of South Dakota. Uh, I think we've handled this very well. To all of you, to Mayor Paul, to, to Jill, um, while we've thrown a lot at you, you, you might be eligible for, uh, an honorary medical degree, to be honest, after all we've sat through and all we've discussed. Your discernment over everything that's been thrown at you, uh, all of you, and the choices you've made are impressive. Um, Avera sure thanks you for all of that. We absolutely, you know, Jill, Jill said it perfect. I can tell she and I and Dr. Willoughby have spent a lot of time together, because we, we are singing from the same sheet of music at this point. We, we have been all along, but now we're using the same terms. We absolutely have to maintain mitigation strategies. We absolutely have to do that. Good hand hygiene, if you're sick, stay home, if you need medical care, call, um, these silly things. Uh, that's going to just be a part of the new norm. And, and, and you got to understand, um, I'm not wearing this to protect myself from anyone else, I'm wearing this to protect you from me. If, if I happen to have the virus, and I'm asymptomatic, and I am asymptomatic, um, I don't want to spread it to you. That's why I wear a mask, and that's why everyone should be wearing a mask, is so that you don't spread the virus from yourself to someone else. Okay? Very, very important that we maintain all of these mitigation strategies going forward. The thought of returning to normal doesn't seem like it's going to happen, not, not in the near future, anyway, not in my mind, in the foreseeable future. So we have to go forward with, how do we live with COVID? We can't avoid it, we can't wrap ourselves in a bubble and just, we're going to spend the rest of our lives that way, we can't do it. But how do we live with it? How do hospitals and clinics live with it? How do we keep our staff safe? How do we keep our patients safe? How do we cohort patients that we know are positive for COVID-19 to keep those that don't have it, uh, as healthy as possible? Thankfully, hospitals and clinics have a lot of practice with infectious elements, and, and we're going to do that very well. Uh, businesses, uh, big and small, are going to have to think about the same thing. How do we run our businesses and keep our staff and our patrons safe? So I, I believe what's being put forward today has all the good intentions, all the right intentions in place. Is it right? Is it wrong? Uh, again, I'm glad I'm living in Sioux Falls, and I'm glad I've got a group of people like you that are helping make tough decisions. But certainly, Avera stands with you and can support your decisions. So thank you.
Thanks, Mike. I'm going to go to Councillor Nitzer, uh, and then to the phones, and then we'll keep going.
And thank you, doctors, and I'm, I'm so glad that Dr. Willoughby brought up what he did throughout this whole thing. What I've been trying to stress to people and think about is making sure that I'm trying to, I'm trying to balance, there's two interests, and sometimes I think people get, are very focused on one side without considering the impacts on the other side, and, and, and there are some deep impacts, the, kind of, is what he was alluding to, the psychological impacts, the deferred preventative scans, you know, there may be somebody who maybe if they would have caught a cancer a little earlier, you know, it, it would have been more treatable. Elective procedures after a while sometimes don't become so elective anymore, and they become urgent. So there's just a lot of impacts. In terms of this ordinance, Director Franken, I, I guess I have a question, and this is really kind of for the benefit of, of businesses. Two questions that would come up, when they want to know, what is my occupancy and what category do you consider me? What would be the central, what would you tell them? Who should they contact?
Um, they can contact, they can contact Jeff Eckhoff's team, and we'll make sure that information is well provided to the community. But our SOAR program will connect them with the information that they need. We've already been getting that information, or those questions asked of us. And so if they go to sioufals.org/covid19, they can link, click the link to the SOAR program, and they can get connected up with a resource.
Okay. Go to that website and go to SOAR.
Yep.
For, for any questions about how to do this.
We also, we also have covid19questions@sioufals.org.
Okay, that you can click and submit a question.
It's an email address that goes straight to the, the right people.
Okay.
And the mayor.
And then, for a, a business that might be, to categorize them, are we looking at basically what we would consider their primary use? Because you have some that are, that are, that are multiple, you know, one where they are a restaurant, but they just happen to have a casino in a corner, and then so, are you, are you chunking these up into different, or are you just trying to figure out, what is their primary use and just sticking to that?
Well, you know, I think that's another good reason to call, um, and, and visit with the folks with the SOAR program. I think they could help, you know, identify what their primary function is, and identify, you know, which section of the ordinance that most applies to them and how they should be then complying with it. That's a, it's a really good question, because we have a handful of entities that might be entertainment and have a bar and restaurant. And so, um, I think for them to be critically thinking about that and come with suggestions on how they can best comply, because maybe they would choose to comply with both sections, for example. If they have a very clearly defined restaurant within their facility, they may choose to manage that, um, and then the, the rest would be at a 50% occupancy level. But I think that's something that we're going to have to work our way through a little bit for those handful of places that, you know, that would apply to, where they kind of fit between both.
And thank you. And then the question that came up, and there's, there could be a lot of variations to this, and obviously, one, one answer would be contact the city, the SOAR program, and have the one-on-one conversation, but as was brought up, things about mingling and walking to the bathroom and, and things, I would assume some of it is going to be common sense. You know, obviously, if it's just incidentally and just being respectful and trying to distance, uh, but a business is, at the end of the day, they have to manage their own business. So if they see somebody in one party walk over and they're standing at another table for five, you, they, they may have to talk to the person, or, I mean, what do you think?
Well, yeah, I would agree. I think that's what, they're going to have to manage it. Um, and so, because they're going to have to really think about that. Do they, they want to be setting the stage right away and setting the expectations with their patrons right away? Because, you know, if you have somebody that's very, you know, concerned because I have someone walking up to me, and for example, they don't have a mask on, and they're getting close to me to talk, I might be a patron that says, I'm not going back there again, they're not doing a very good job of managing this. And, and so that would be one scenario. And then there's another scenario where someone says, not only do I not want to go back there, I'm calling, and I'm going to, you know, have them, have the health department, for example, um, make sure they're going out and, and reeducating them and making sure they're complying with, uh, the requirements.
And I, and I should say, from what I've seen, obviously, the customer expectations really are going to drive this. People have a very, they want to see that you are doing the right thing. So businesses, obviously, are figuring out ways to do it, and, and so they're, there's, they're going to deal with that. As far as parties waiting to be seated, so once again, they're going to have to manage that, that would presumably count towards, uh, so could you have potentially one family? So they're going to have to figure it out. If you could have one family standing in one spot, maybe you have spots on the floor, and the other one needs to be six feet, 10 feet away, and they have to...
Yeah, they're going to have to manage that, absolutely.
Okay. And the other, I guess I would just finish with is, the other thing that I heard that, that I've really been thinking about as well, is that we, we have to figure out how do we live with COVID, COVID, and mitigate it, but also function as, as a society? So, and, and that's what we're trying to balance here, so, thank you.
Let me go to the phones and see if any of the councillors on the phones have any questions All right.
Mayor?
Councillor Brackey, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of comments. I am supportive of the ordinance changes, um, and will be supporting them at second reading of, of course, as, with the qualification, and I'm sure it's a qualification that we all have, and that is at the time of the second reading, that the numbers and the modeling continues to support it. And that is, in, in the, on the one hand, while it's difficult to not be able to do things as rapidly as we might want, um, there has been some benefits to that in kind of reassuring us that we're, the more time in between, then it's more reassuring that we're, you know, we're safe in doing what we're doing. Um, however, I, I, I may be bringing amendment, um, that deals with section six- However, I may be bringing amendment that deals with Section 6 of the proposal, and that is the requirement, the statement in there that Ordinance 4220 is hereby repealed. Again, since we're doing things so quickly, I certainly criticize no one for how quick we're trying to respond to things, and I hope no one criticizes me. But I do have some concern about procedurally. And so, I will be collaborating with Tom Greco and Stacy Coystre. I'm concerned about engaging in a practice where we adopt an ordinance and repeal a separate ordinance, even though the separate ordinance has overlapping subject matter in a single motion. I think there's parliamentary issues, and I have legal concerns and transparency issues about it. But I think it's something that can, you know, be worked out. And I just, again, the lapse, the shortness of time did not allow me to raise the issue or have the discussions necessary to do that. But I did want to give everyone a heads up that I'm going to be working with those two entities to try to do this in such a way that we don't set a practice that might be a bad practice in the future because we're trying to deal with things rapidly in a crisis. So, other than that, I appreciate all of the content of the information that has been shared and all the hard work that's going into this by the hospitals and all the city council members and the city staff and mayor. And I do, I am comfortable with this. And I would share my compliments to the community and how innovative and positive they are remaining. And just South Dakota's spirit and resiliency, you know, coming forward and trying to do this in such a way, and in a way that is totally committed. I'm seeing from the business community, a very strong commitment to doing this in the safest way possible. And so, they truly are partners with us, you know, in this crisis journey. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Staley?
And I, moving forward, I guarantee that people are going to be coming forth with questions as they find out the details of the ordinance. So, that's why I'm trying to think about, if it was affecting me, what some of those questions might be. And this, what I'm hearing is that we're evolving here in a situation where we're recognizing the word "party" as six people, not in a family, and not who have been cohabitating together. But we're saying "party" is six people who are making that decision to come together. And those people are sitting together at a table. And then, the six feet apart is another "party." So, that in itself, I think, is what, when Counselor Erickson is referencing, these sporting, outdoor sporting activities, I think that that may be something that could be questionable, that why wouldn't then a group of people playing softball, if you have six of them, couldn't they be a party? Or is it going to be six kids or six people playing basketball together? They're going to be a party, so to speak, that they can be as close as they want to be, as close as I'm going to be sitting next to my dinner guest. So, I think we're going to be asked to define that going outside of a restaurant setting. And then, let's just clarify, too, for like, the mall's going to reopen, I guess. So, the Macy's, is that going to be the 50%? And if it's 50%, then is it, we have to stay six feet apart? Or can you have six, can you have a party at Macy's? You know, where I'm going to be, if I want to be close to someone, I can? Or how does that play out in department stores or Shields or...?
Counselor, this ordinance applies only to those entities that are listed. When we talk about other businesses, we are talking about them from a perspective of following good social distancing practices and maintaining their business according to CDC guidance. And so, any of those businesses you listed, you know, like retail, department stores, et cetera, you know, we would ask them to be, you know, reviewing their practices and encouraging how can they follow good guidance around social distancing. But they're not included in this ordinance as far as the regulation of 50% or the number of patrons, et cetera, that are included, like they are for those defined.
And I understand that, but I can still see where that could become, I mean, a questionable thing in the sense that, so, we're at Macy's, and a bunch of us know each other, and we're standing together. And so, you could, and that is like our choice to stand together? Or that Macy's is supposed to be intervening to say, "Stand six feet apart," or... So, it's a little looser, I guess, with Macy's would be the same thing as like a Walmart?
We haven't regulated those types of entities thus far. And so, we would continue to encourage and ask them to be following CDC guidance. We'd expect them to be doing those things, to be mitigating the spread of COVID. But they haven't been regulated by the city.
And, well, then, let's go back to the mayor's proclamation when he was talking about the recommendation that a business would have no more than 20% of the patrons, of the occupancy, with patrons coming in. Is that, I was thinking that that was in reference to the Walmarts and the Hyvies. And I would think that would, maybe we didn't talk about that much because the mall had closed. It seemed like everything else was closing. So, the 20% thing isn't going to be, that's off the table now?
I guess I can jump in on that one. I mean, the proclamation was not as a matter of law. That was a position put out by the mayor as a recommendation. And there's nothing in this ordinance that relates to the 20% that you're referencing.
So, 20%, so 20% is really just still out there as a recommendation? But it's, that would just be part of the recommendation, like washing your hands and wearing a mask and...
I think it's accurate to say the proclamation was, occurred at a different time and was targeted toward a different circumstance. And so, you know, I believe the ordinance reflects the mayor's current position.
Counselor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director, if you would, one of the things that I did notice is that our packet has an extra slide that we didn't use, and it kind of makes the point that I'm looking for. So, somebody put this together, so I wouldn't mind going through it a little bit. The last, yep. What do we do if that's us? You know, we don't have, you know, we've determined that we can't put things in an emergency basis, that we need to take at least that six or seven days to do something. You know, a couple of weeks ago, I made the same comment. We've done everything we can to mitigate it. But what if this occurs in our city, just, you know, they're 90 miles away from us? I mean, what do we have for tools that, where we can go backwards, that we can address that? Or, let's do it this way. What are they doing to address this?
Well, first off, you can see that that has been a really recent spike. It wasn't that many days ago, you know, they had their first case later than us. And it wasn't that many days ago that they were sitting way below us in the number of cases that they'd had in Sioux City thus far. And so, similar to what happened with our Smithfield hotspot area, they now are dealing with some of those same issues because of some of their plant operations that they have locally. So, if this, I, I'm going to say that certainly we do, we have risk in any of the actions that we've taken thus far. What we're relying on is the way the modeling is taking us now. These are cases, and we have all recognized that cases are going to increase. But what we have to really follow closely now is hospitalization rates. And that's the thing that we're going to be watching very, very closely. That's why we have two people in unified command from our health systems, is because we're watching that very carefully. And so, cases is going to be less of an indicator, and actual hospitalizations are going to be more of an indicator for us. So, I think we are well positioned to be able to take action when we need to. It's going to, we all have to work together on that, right? That's why we have a special meeting today, and then another special meeting the day after your regular council meeting, because we want to make sure we're taking as timely action as possible. We still have tools in our toolbox of things we can do to clamp down tighter if we need to. We've seen we can do that, right? We hope we won't have to, and that we can manage through this with everybody doing their part so that we won't have to take that action. There's always a risk in any action that you take, so for sure. But I think we have, I think we have made some really good calculated decisions based on our modeling that I think will keep us in that gray zone of what the hospitals can handle.
I know. I'm doing the same thing. The mask has helped me greatly, too. I didn't realize how many times I touched my face during the course of a little bit of time. Mr. Greco, if you could flip back to the chart with the hospitalizations that Director Franken was just talking about, and where that bar is of around 700, the next one back? Yeah, thank you. I'm trying to figure out with CDC guidance, and that we're supposed to be, before we open things up, is 14 days of declining numbers. And I'm trying to see, you know, what we're using to say that we've had 14 days of declining numbers to move forward with opening things up. I get the point about having, you know, quality of care. We talked a lot about two weeks ago. We talked about the ban that's there. But when I go back to the number of cases, the daily numbers, we're not, are we seeing a 14-day decline that we're at that point to open things up?
Well, if you look very specifically at how they've defined that, the State Department of Health even has a graph on their website of Minnehaha County specifically, and it shows a 14-day trend line that's decreasing. But I will tell you, we have been far more restrictive in our community than the state has dictated. And so, when you try to think between the stay-at-home that's in place for our over 65 and those that are more vulnerable medically, between, and what we're doing now, there's room there. And so, that's the room we're trying to manage because we made choices as a community to do what we fondly called the no lingering, or not fondly, for sure, but that we have called the no lingering ordinance that's in place right now. But there's room between the two, and that's the balance we're trying to strike right now.
So, I'm looking for the third graph of if we go forward with this ordinance, where does the model show us between these two lines? I guess that's the...
Yep. Sorry. I should let you...
Nope, you're good. I babble too long, and then you...
It's an exactly good question because one of the things that we'll wrestle with now is whatever ordinance is adopted, how do we calculate what percent mitigation? Remember, we said we're probably achieving about 25% mitigation? So, then, we're going to kind of calculate it. What do we think this, or this new ordinance will achieve us? And do some modeling accordingly. But then, we're also going to do modeling based on actual hospitalizations every week. So, I've already, we've already got a plan to have that ready for you for next week, to see another week of where that modeling takes us based on actual hospitalizations. But we do have room to maneuver between those two surge estimates. And that's where we want to land, is somewhere in there, somewhere in between. We certainly don't want to go any higher than that over, that first peak. And we don't, you know, we want to be somewhere in between, and that's where we think we'll land with this.
Well, and I think that's my original point. Someone said it earlier, that we're not New York. Well, and we've been looking, and I think it was Dr. Willoughby a couple of weeks ago at one point mentioned to us that, you know, we need to look at what happens in a Midwestern city, where we're more rural, what it fits to the Midwest. Well, I think we saw that in Sioux Falls. We saw that in what Sioux City's going through in three days, the way they spike, that whether we have those tools, we're able to do that. So, my next line, if I can, is probably for Dr. Elliott and Dr. Willoughby, is I'm looking at the statewide numbers of number of tests that we're doing. We're seeing a higher rate of testing being positive, but we're seeing numbers that were as high as 900 to 1,000 tests daily to less than 250 now, and less than 200 in the last four or five days. Are physicians not ordering the tests? Do we not have the supplies? Why have we become so conservative in the amount of testing we're doing? I'm looking at the state numbers, and I'm assuming that that matches our population compared to the rest of the state. But what am I missing? Because what I keep hearing from the experts is that we, that this is about testing. This is about being able to have a handle of where these cases are happening. And if we stop testing, of course, our numbers are going to skew. Or are we totally relying on hospitalized patients?
Couple of answers there. So, number one, at Sanford, anyway, we do not use the state lab at all any longer. And that's nothing against the state lab in any shape, way, or form. They've been great partners. We've been able to obtain technologies to get a good turnaround and prioritize testing. Our testing numbers at Sanford have been pretty steady and pretty robust on a daily basis. And so, that could be part of the reason why the state numbers maybe have come down a little bit, or maybe don't look that high, is because there's other entities. I can't speak to entities outside of Sanford and Sioux Falls, but we're not using the state lab right now. In regard to, you know, really what this comes down to, and others have alluded to it as well, is really the hospital capacity to appropriately care for patients. And therefore, I think the hospitalization rate, which has, is one of those things that's been evolving, the rate, hospitalization rate and the length of stay. Looking at Sioux Falls compared to, you know, what I said a couple of weeks ago, where we have not seen this in an upper Midwest city. We've seen this in New York, Washington, and internationally. What we are seeing is probably a little shorter length of stay right now in addition to a little slower hospitalization rate. We'll see what happens in six days, right? It's changing situation.
Do you have, if you were working, helping with the modeling, if we're at 25% mitigation right now, if we pass this ordinance, what, in your opinion, do we drop to 20? I don't see, passing this ordinance isn't going to increase that 25%.
I'd agree with that. But I'd also echo what Dr. Elliott said and give, and what Jill has said and all of us has said, frankly. And let's give tremendous credit to the vast majority of the citizens of this area and this city in regard to, you go to any business, and people are masked, people are distanced, people are more hygienic. And I'll throw myself in there just for the sake of humility, really practicing what we've been preaching, and I just really do an amazing job. So, with that, I'd anticipate continued compliance with the proposed ordinance. I have tremendous faith in the people of Sioux Falls to continue with that.
Thank you. I didn't know if Dr. Elliott wanted to add to that.
It's pretty easy, it's pretty easy to follow Dr. Willoughby or Jill because I can just say ditto, agree with everything he said. It's a great question, right? We don't want to open this up too far. We don't want to go backwards to a point where we are overwhelmed. Both Sanford and Avera are not city hospitals. They are community hospitals, we're referral centers. More than half of Avera McKinnon's admissions come from outside of 30 miles. So, we are watching closely both what's happening here in Sioux Falls and what's happening throughout all of South Dakota. Certainly, Sioux City has caught our attention. The models are what they are. They're based on the best data that we have available. And it seems, it seems like a hotspot can just completely wreck any model that was predicted. How do you predict the next hotspot? Where's it going to be? How big is it going to be? How much mitigation was done before the first cases? So, it's really hard. It's really hard.
So, the, part of the original question was about testing and the amount of testing we're doing. Are you seeing, are you doing less testing, more testing? Does this surprise you when you look at the state numbers? Or is it just that all the tests are shifting out of the state lab into private or community hospitals and private labs?
I'm hesitant to answer on behalf of the state lab. I think there's probably people at the state lab that could answer that better. Certainly, both Avera and Sanford have ramped up our abilities to do tests, not just here in Sioux Falls, but all of our regions, all of our regional hospitals. We feel like we're doing a pretty robust amount of tests because we know that testing is, there's a limit on how many tests we can run. And we are at the mercy of the suppliers to bring us the Q-tips for doing the sample collection, for the testing kits. We may look really good today, but if the shipment doesn't show up next week, all of a sudden, we are short. So, we are forecasting, looking at how many tests we're running right now and what we consider to be high priority folks. Those are folks that are in the hospital or folks that have significant health histories and are having symptoms. Those are people we feel we need to test urgently. Healthcare workers, long-term care staff, residents of long... Healthcare workers, long-term care staff, residents of long-term cares, we're prioritizing those while still trying to keep a little bit of a surplus in case the next hotspot were to come up. The more testing we do, I think this is pretty well-proven fact, the more positives we're going to find. I'm not exactly sure what to do with that. What I do know what to do with is the number of people in our, in our emergency department and the number of people we have in the hospital. And so the, the most recent models have gone away from positive tests and are looking more at what the hospitalization rates are. I think that's a quantity that'll be more telling for us than the number of positive or negative tests out there.
So to follow up a little bit on that, have you gotten to that point? We've talked about beds and where we're at. Have we even gotten close to overwhelming the EDs yet? I mean, are we South Dakotans and we're tough and we stay home? And, you know, we've talked a lot about the pride of being in Sioux Falls and that part of it, and I think Dr. Wildey mentioned that a little bit in, in his remarks too, is that we're maybe too tough and not asking for the help when we need it?
Well, definitely our emergency staffs are tough people, they're hardworking people. But no, they are not overwhelmed. We have not had to expand our emergency department to take on an increased volume at this point in time. So we are holding our own. Knock, I can't knock on wood, but.
No, please.
Knock on wood. You know, I mean, we, we saw the Sioux City numbers, and, and, you know, shame on us if we celebrate right now. We still have to be cautious, but again, to my point, we've got to figure out how to live with COVID, and I, I think that's what, what the changes to the ordinance are asking us to do.
Thank you. Did you have something else, Dr. Wildey, or, I, stretching like the rest of us want to? One other line, if I can, Mayor. Director Franken, one of the things that I'm also trying to put a handle on, as, it's a big topic of conversation in the community, obviously, with when Smithfield comes back online. And one of the questions that I get pretty often is the safety of employees, obviously, but there's been a major change with the president's executive order this week of how they're regulated, and moving some of that control from both local and fed, or state to a federal enforcement. And I don't know how that works. How do I explain that to people and how, when those employees say, hey, are we safe to go back to work? And with this change, have you been able to grasp it? Because it hasn't been that long since the executive order came out on Wednesday.
Well, I think.
Or Tuesday.
We're still understanding, you know, the relationship between what the federal government is, you know, stepping in to do versus state and the Department of Health and, and the governor's office and, and then local government. We're here right now to support making sure that it's successful to reopen to the degree that we can. So for example, for them to be able to complete adequate testing of their employees, we're here to help them with that and make, help make sure they're successful in that endeavor. Our chief medical officer, Dr. Tingley, is part of a team that will help them when they're trying to get reopened and be part of that, going through the building and the facility to make sure that that is, you know, done as she's been being asked to do. And so right now, that's, we know that that's a pretty big issue right now. You saw that, CDC, the recommendations from the CDC have also been made as regulation and guidelines for other meatpacking plants to follow, and so I think this is something that we're seeing, they're trying to get their arms around this and make sure that they can manage this for the supply chain of food across the country.
Well, I'm certainly not an expert, but when I read parts of the executive order, the part that concerned me more than anything was, is that we're going from following ocean guidelines to, to highly recommend or to, to water some of that down in a way to get them open, and at least that's the perception that we're hearing from, or I'm hearing from employees and people who are there. So what are we doing then to meet with the employees to make sure that they understand exactly what's going on and how that they'll be able to feel safe when the plant's open? Because the alternative is, once the plant opens and someone doesn't feel safe, they've given up their right to unemployment insurance and all of their benefits are going to go away.
Well, in addition to being, helping in any way we can to help them be able to successfully open, I think you've heard Mayor Tenhacon talk about this a number of times, we, we want them to be able to open and we want them to be able to open safely. Our role has been to, as it relates to employees, is to make sure that we provide the assistance that's needed to ensure that those populations, multicultural and multilingual populations are able to be reached and that we help work within our EOC to ensure that they have the access that they need and the, and the community resources that they need to successfully do that, to make sure that communication is happening.
I think one of the emails that we received this weekend, it just, it popped into my head as you were saying that, is that the multicultural center is feeling an extreme stress for funding, that they're not going to, you know, that they're considerably behind, and I think probably most nonprofits in our community are going through that same thing, but we need them to, to keep going. Are we looking at supplementing their budget or providing the extra help that they need? Have we gotten any of that yet?
We have gotten a lot of funding requests from community organizations, and the answer to that is no, we haven't made any decisions on that.
I just, my point being, I don't want to get too far down the road when they've already made, you know, that they're not able to do the translation. You know, we all talk about the different numbers of languages and cultures that do work at Smithfield and being able to get that information to them, and I think that's part of why we see the spikes and a lot of that, that business is that there is some language communication things, and so one or the other of how we fund it, I'm not sure exactly where we go down that road, but I don't want to wake up one morning and they're not around anymore to, to help us when we need them, so. Thank you, that's it for me.
All right, are we ready to put a motion on the floor on this? Counselor Erickson?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to set a second date of, I'll make a motion to set a date of second reading for Thursday, May 7th, 2020, at 10:30 a.m.
Second, Knightzer.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Knightzer. Counselor Erickson?
I would like to make an amendment, a motion to amend the third to last whereas clause to read, quote, "Whereas the Sioux Falls Board of Health convened an emergency meeting on May 1st, 2020, at 1:00 p.m. Central Standard Time and reviewed revised business regulations," end quote, "changing," quote, insert vote, end quote, in the second to the last whereas clause to, quote, "six to zero," end quote, and inserting, quote, "eight," end quote, after May, quote, end quote, in paragraph six, seven of section one.
Second, Knightzer. All right, seconded by Knightzer. Let's take a vote on that amendment, please.
Point of, point of order.
Yeah.
Now, I thought we couldn't make amendments on first readings. Didn't we just have that issue happen? We had the issue with Counselor Starr, and then I think that they, I'd like to ask our parliamentarian about that because I think we, we decided that maybe that wasn't appropriate to have an amendment on a first reading.
I'll defer to Attorney Coystre too, but these are all purely administrative in nature, and they basically update the ordinance so that somebody looking at it next week, it'll, it'll make sense. So what the first amendment did is it changed a future tense to a past tense stating that the, that the meeting occurred. And also on the ordinance right now, it says where Counselor Erickson mentioned, insert vote. It meant for us to literally insert the vote so that people have awareness of what it is. And then the last amendment is to set the date of publication, and that was all contingent upon when we were able to do the special meeting. But to answer your question specifically, I think in the past, we've made amendments for purely administrative type items, but not to the substance of the ordinance, and if Attorney Coystre has anything, I'd welcome his input.
Well, and I, and I thought that, yeah, I thought at issue was just the sack, the sense that you can't do an amendment on a first reading. I mean, no matter what, I mean, we debated whether it's a substantive context, that's a whole nother thing, but I thought, I thought technically you cannot have an amendment on a first reading, no matter what it is. So now we, we can, apparently.
Well, again, the, the topic that we've discussed regarding amendments before relates to the substantive versus non-substantive, and so amendments typically are reserved to second readings. As City Clerk Greco mentioned, there's some administrative information they wanted to provide here as far as whether or not it can be done, preferences to have it done at second reading, though I understand the, the intent and the preference to put the, put the public on notice as to the, the Board of Health's vote.
No, and I get that, it just, I think in the past, when, when we've had even an amendment on the second reading, you've had a question about that.
Correct, and that, and that relates.
Now, it's like amendments in general, it's, where do they belong? And I guess, so now we're saying that kind of can be, if we make a judgment as if they're just a housekeeping amendment or if they've got something, a weightier.
Right. I mean, any, any weightier or substantive amendment, and, you know, we discussed that before, is prohibited by state law, just to protect the public on notice and those sorts of things. So there isn't anything about this as a matter of state law. That's a problem as a matter of procedure. You know, amendments should be made at, at second reading when it comes to these things, but again, I understand the intent regarding the Board of Health ruling.
All right, then we're going to allow this amendment to be voted on, being that it's fairly just clean-up language in nature, so we'll take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yep.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. So any further discussion on the main motion as amended? Counselor Staley?
Yes, I, I just have one question. The issue of air quality came up in a discussion I've had in the last few days, and I have thought about air quality.
Counselor Brecky, can you mute your phone, please?
At least it wasn't a dog this time. We heard a dog barking one time. So anyway, air quality, is that going to be something that's up to the, the business? And I heard last night that of a, of a, someone who is going to businesses at night and fumigating the business to, and I'd never heard of that, so maybe someone could weigh in, is that a practice? I mean, what, what, what are they, are they going into certain, this happened to be a banking institution where they were going in at night and they were having to wear gear because they were like in there spraying some kind of a disinfectant, which I hadn't heard of that before. So air quality, I guess, is the thing, is the question and?
Counselor Staley, there's certainly guidance out there for cleaning and disinfecting. I think I'd be, if you don't mind, I'll bring some more information next week for you on that particular item.
About the spray, the fumigation? Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Let's take a vote on this, please.
Just unmuting some folks. Councilmembers Sale?
Yep.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Any other business, counsel?
Move to adjourn, Starr.
All right, motion adjourned by Starr, seconded by Erickson. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.